Welcome to the May 23 Planning Commission meeting. We're going to start out by suggesting perhaps that, Richard, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I'd like to lead this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess we could have a roll call.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Mr. Denio?
Here.
Mr. Severson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Well, we have two missing, but we still have a quorum, I guess, so we can continue to work. We're next going to have a report from our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of updates from the board's meeting on May 21. The board started out the meeting with a commendation to Jerry Brettenall for his years of service to the Planning Commission. We will have a similar commendation at the June 13 meeting. We'd wanted to have it today, but Mr. Brettenall wasn't available, so on June 13 we'll have a commendation from your commission to Mr. Brettenall. The board took action to unanimously approve the targeted general plan update. This is the policy-only update that your commission previously considered and recommended to the board, and that was approved. And the other action that the board took action on was an extension of the interim ordinance regarding community centers. Based upon our last meeting, where you provided a recommendation to the board to move forward with a zoning text amendment on community centers, the board unanimously approved that and extended the moratorium to allow for staff to work with your commission to bring forward a proposal for the board's consideration. Just a couple of updates for your June 13 agenda. As I previously mentioned, we'll be having a commendation for Mr. Brettenall. There's a proposed chairlift at Sugar Bowl, a modification to the Highlands 2 subdivision, and as we have previously discussed, we will be having a workshop on possible zoning text amendments to wineries. As we discussed at our last workshop on community centers, while there are similarities between the two, at this point, staff believes it's important to consider them independently. So we'll have a workshop on the proposed amendments to the winery ordinance, and that will be at your June 13 commission hearing.
That concludes staff comment.
That's going to be held here?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Any questions, staff?
How long did the moratorium on the community centers get extended for?
The board extended it for the maximum length allowed by the state law, the next 22 months and 15 days. Staff proposes to have a zoning text amendment back to the board by November of this year. But the way state law is written, once you implement the more plan, you cannot extend it. So the board took action to extend it for the maximum period of time. At such time that the zoning text amendment comes forward, they will then repeal that interim ordinance.
Did the board give you any direction on the one pending permit or request for permit?
Not at the moment. As we've been discussing issues with calendar, we've already been working to a discussion with this conversation, which can't be made without a meeting with the applicant to see how best we can serve the interim ordinance.
Any other questions, staff? It's time to have public comment. Anyone in the audience that would care to address the Planning Commission on items that aren't going to be considered today are welcome to come forward and address the commission with any concerns or thoughts. Oh, there she goes.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident and member of the North Tahoe West area plan team. I have been participating for several months, and I am looking forward to coming forward to the Planning Commission with updates in the near future. We understand that you will be hearing some of the activities. I do have some concerns that we haven't been provided with all the planning tools necessary for a layperson like myself, the understanding of the difference between a conditional use permit, a mitigated negative deck. I'm learning as we go and studying code and have asked staff. Crystal Jacobson and her staff are doing a wonderful job, but there's some tools that we haven't been provided, and also the consultant isn't necessarily updating our documentation as we go. And again, that's been brought forward to staff. I think it will get corrected. And I do have some concerns about the upcoming Kings Beach Vision. This planning activity for the area plans that we are working on have been very labor-intensive and time-intensive for the people. There's nine of us on each team. There's four teams, and then they're going to bring this vision in and try to overlay. So I do have some concerns that there'll be some disruption to our current planning activities. We're finding that that's happening with the Tahoe City Vision that was put in place by the Business Association. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on into the heart of our agenda today, which is a conditional use permit for North Star Forest Flyer. And it looks like Mr. Haas is going to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. The request before you at this time is for approval of a conditional use permit for the Forest Flyer. The Flyer is a toboggan-style Alpine coaster that would be located in the mid-mountain area of North Star Resort, North Star, California. Here's North Star, California. It's about midway off 267, about midway between Interstate 80 and Lake Tahoe. This is an image of the resort. The mid-mountain area is this portion down here. The coaster would generally kind of run up in this alignment uphill into the west. Is it west, right?
The east.
East. Sorry, completely backwards. It always gets me. This is the village area of North Star. This is the proposed location. The actual site would be right here. This is the mid-mountain area, as I mentioned. This is North Star Village. So the gondola would run up this way. This is where the day lodge is up there, the Dick Springs Day Lodge. The coaster would run uphill in this direction and then descend on the winding path coming downhill. It'd be about 1,500-foot climb up the track with an electric motor. The toboggans, individual toboggans are released, and they wind down the hill on about a half-mile The original project was known as the Alpine Coaster, and it was originally proposed down at the village to begin at the village and then ran uphill from there. In 2010, the 2010 project was withdrawn by the applicant when the previous owner, Booth Creek, completed the sale of North Star. So the project now has been relocated up the hill to address concerns about noise and compatibility with the coaster at its initially proposed location. So this is a closer image of the alignment. What you can see is the development in the area there. This is the kind of rather straight uphill track. There are existing ski runs throughout here. This is the mid-mountain maintenance building. This is the Dick Springs Day Lodge. So there's a lot of activity in this mid-mountain area, and this is just one more component of it here. This is an image of the mid-mountain area. That's the, if I'm not mistaken, that's the bottom of the village lift. Vista, my apologies. The coaster would extend uphill off in this direction. And here's an image of what the coaster is. These are, as mentioned, toboggan-style. It's not a series of them connected. They can accommodate one or two riders. They're pulled uphill, and then they're released to kind of descend at their own pace. They can brake those if they want to, to slow down. You can see they're kind of designed to wind through the trees, not through a clear-cut path. Imagine something like the Ewoks of Endor, you know, moving through the trees. That's kind of what this is attempting to achieve. I'm just going to briefly summarize the discussion of issues that is set forth in the staff report for your benefit. The first issue is project consistency with the zone district. The Alpine Coaster is not identified as an allowed use in the forestry zone district. So why are we here? This is because the zoning ordinance doesn't include a definition of a coaster at all. So we don't have any in the unincorporated part of the county. The ordinance does, however, include a section that allows for the planning director's determination that if a use is not listed elsewhere in the code, it can be allowed in a given district provided the findings are made. Consistent with Section 17.02.050, the planning director determined that the coaster is similar in nature to ski lifts in that both uses convey guests uphill and allow them to descend via gravity. The director's findings include consistency with the Marth Valley Community Plan and consistency with the purpose and intent of the forestry zone, and these findings are included in your staff report. The second issue in the staff report that's mentioned there is the CEQA piecemeal of the project. The staff report addresses project piecemealing, concluding that independent environmental review of the project from the consideration of the North Star Mountain Master Plan is consistent with CEQA. Findings for this conclusion are that the North Star Mountain Master Plan is not a foreseeable consequence of this project. In addition, the Forest Flyer does not commit the county or the applicant to the master plan, and the Forest Flyer project is not a necessary precedent to the North Star Mountain Master Plan. Both projects have independent utility, meaning that they stand on their own. Neither one is dependent on the other. And approval of the Forest Flyer would not foreclose an examination of alternatives or mitigation measures for the Mountain Master Plan. The resulting mitigated negative declaration that you have there has found that there are no potentially significant environmental impacts that could result from the Forest Flyer project, so an EIR is not required. The next issue is noise. This was a paramount concern, as I mentioned, with the 2010 proposal, so staff was keenly aware of the potential impacts. For that reason, as I mentioned, the project was relocated uphill further away from residences. And as stated in the NECDAC, the noise study was prepared with data that was taken from an existing Alpine coaster on two separate seasonal measurements. The noise data was then combined with ambient noise level measurements from the project site. The acoustical consultant concluded that the noise levels generated by the project would fall below the noise threshold established in the Marth Valley Community Plan and in the Placer County General Plan. Next issue is drainage. The drainage report indicates that none of the runoff from the Flyer project site is tributary to the North Star Village drainage system, so the project would not result in new or worsened drainage conditions on the site. Traffic. The traffic analysis relies on ridership counts from another existing Alpine coaster in a similar resort setting. Increases to traffic site will be minimal and will be mitigated through payment into the traffic impact fee program for future infrastructure upgrades. Placer County traffic engineers reviewed the application materials and concluded that the traffic report was not necessary for the project, that a traffic report is not necessary for this project. This determination was based on the fact that the coaster would be located at mid-mountain. This means that a potential rider would have to access the gondola, park in the village, access the gondola, ride it up to mid-mountain, and then pay a separate fee for a single ride on the coaster. The ride would last about three minutes uphill and about five minutes downhill. So given the short duration of the entire coaster experience and the process required to access it, county traffic engineers determined that ridership would primarily draw from existing North Star market, meaning the users are not likely to travel to the site exclusively for a ride on the coaster, but would visit North Star for all of its other amenities.
Jerry, I have a question in regards to that, because you talk about an increase in use. Now, with this project, they're not increasing their parking lots, so they have a certain amount of parking that they can do and would have to turn anybody else away, right?
That's correct.
So, okay, because that was my question. I know in reading all the documentation that they're saying, well, it's going to bring a lot more people in, but if they're not increasing parking, then they have a limit that they want to.
Sure. I'm happy to take any easy questions you have.
Okay.
So to put the potential increase in perspective, the mountain currently has an uphill carrying capacity of 34,799 guests per hour. The total realized capacity of this coaster would be approximately 200 riders per hour. So the potential, so the project would represent a very small fraction of all potential mountain usage, and any increase in visitation would be negligible. Did want to point out that the project has been found to be consistent with the North Star Habitat Management Plan. The project site is located in, I don't really have, forgot again to put the image. The applicant will show you the image in just a few minutes here, but essentially, the Habitat Management Plan is a survey of the entire North Star property, and it identifies areas that are appropriate, most appropriate for conservation, and differentiates those from properties that are more appropriate for intensive ski development. This is an area identified for intensive ski development. Most of the wildlife corridors, most of the habitat, primary habitat, including some of the old growth forest, is off around the perimeters away from this site. So that was a brief discussion of the issues that are identified in the staff report. In addition to the staff report and the comment letters, you've each been handed an errata to the staff report. The errata provides responses to all comments that have been received since the preparation of the staff report. So I think we had about 19 comment letters that were received prior. We had another nine, 10, somewhere in there that came in afterwards, and the errata just provides responses to those comment letters. With that, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval and the augmented findings that are contained in the errata. And staff also recommends adoption of the mitigated negative declaration with the change that the hours of operation are modified as detailed in the staff report and reflected in the conditions of approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a few difficult questions for you.
I had a feeling one might come up.
Maybe you can go back to the photograph that shows the overall area.
Okay, we have a couple of images there.
It was towards the beginning. One before that one.
Okay. This is the whole mountain here. Well, this is the developed part of the mountain.
Okay. In the staff report, there was reference to east-west, Marth Creek, and a west-west, Marth Creek. You can tell that they named these creeks in Placer County. They always do it that way.
Right.
Anyway, could you point out where those drainages are?
Well, Aspen Grove is down here. The village is right here. The drainage runs down in this direction. I'm not sure where east and west meet. My understanding is that they meet below the village.
So the west fork of Marth Creek is the overflow that comes out of the western.
Mr. Chair?
Why don't we wait until the applicant comes up, and we'll have them readdress this?
Okay, that's one question. We can readdress it. I think you just, maybe point out where Aspen Grove is.
Right down in this area, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it's actually right next to?
Yeah, if you pull up a Google image, they're the ones with the purple roofs.
They're the what?
In the Google image, they have purple roofs, so it's blue.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
And apparently, this is a fairly old subdivision.
It's been around, yeah, for a while.
And then, let's see, another question. A lot of these are just for good understanding of the lay of the land.
Sure.
Another question is, on the noise study, you was talking about a future development of multifamily homes that are within 100 feet of the coaster?
Right. That would be where this maintenance building is now. With the Highlands project, there was approval for a multifamily dwelling to be located in that area.
Multifamily dwelling would be like an apartment?
Condominium townhome complex. So if and when it's constructed, we took worst case and assume this to be the nearest sensitive receptor for the purposes of evaluating the noise impacts. It's about 100 feet from the nearest point of the coaster, so that's where the measurements were drawn from. But even at that location, they didn't exceed day or night noise thresholds.
Okay. Good, that's helpful.
Okay.
And then, let's see, coaster, I've seen some pictures here, and there's some people that are kind of equating this to a roller coaster in a amusement park, which I'm assuming the technology for a coaster that we're talking about here is very similar to a roller coaster in terms of you get pulled up the hill and your gravity flow on down.
Yep.
And so there's, I can see where those are similar, but I guess I'm seeing a distinction here that maybe I didn't see in the staff report, that in this case, we're in a different setting. We're in a forest setting instead of an amusement park.
Right.
That's at least one distinction, and I guess that's kind of where you were thinking of this.
Yeah, that's basically it. It acts much like a ski lift in that it can't be accessed except through a gondola. It's right there where all the other ski lifts are. There've been some comments raised, well, ski lift only operates during the winter time. These ski lifts actually operate year-round. They take mountain bikers and hikers up the hill during the summertime. So it really does function similarly to a ski lift. It pulls people up the mountain. They ride down in whichever fashion, in this case, on a toboggan.
Can I sort of ask, you know, little more detail on that? This also just stays a certain amount off the ground. I mean, it's not like a roller coaster that most of us have in our mind.
Oh, right.
It has a few loops, and we go up 200 or 300 feet and drop off and everything where it goes up above the trees and stuff. It just stays a certain amount.
That's a good point. You see how they're strapped in here?
Yeah.
They're not prepared to go upside down. They're not doing cord screws or anything like that.
Or go up and drop off.
Right.
So elevation of it off the ground, it looks like, is just a couple, two or three feet.
It'll vary depending on the topography that it's going over. I think at its highest point, when it needs to cross over roadways, it'd be about 18 at the highest point.
26.
26. So when they have points where traffic or roadways need to go underneath it, you take a look and see, you can see where some of the roads. This is just very slow for me today.
You can tell better on the plans. I noticed that same issue.
Yeah, you can see where it's going to be crossing areas that are already being accessed with access roads and ski runs.
I guess that access road is accessing the top of the ski lift next to the top of the coaster?
I'm not sure about that. That's probably.
Okay, I guess we can get an explanation there. Let me see, just another final one, and then, you know, we can go on. Now, I guess, I think you've said it, but now the master plan is being developed, as I think I'm reading it, is now the new owners, the Vale Associates, have come in and they've looked at the existing pattern of skiing in the area, and the master plan is intended to change that so it more fits what they business want to make it work. And I think that's the way I'm interpreting it, where there's no requirement that they develop a master plan.
No. No, this is something that's intended, first of all, it's been around since about 2007. So it's been in the works, and it's just taking some time to develop it. Really what it envisions is the overall scale of the mountain, the usage in the future. It's, sorry, just bear with me while it kind of, it must be the batteries here. One more. Okay. So the Mountain Master Plan would identify areas for expansion of the ski trails and ski runs, so there'd be a new lift over here, proposed at a program level for the Mountain Master Plan, also another lift over here on this mountain, on Sawtooth Ridge. So going down to Sawtooth Lake, there'd be another lift and another lift over here, and then widening some of the ski trails. It's really just designed to kind of prepare a vision for the future of the mountain and its development.
And so this would be another level of document and specific lift or something like that?
Yes. Actually, it would encompass several lifts. I think a total of five lifts that are being proposed, ski trail widening, new campsites on the mountain. So a process has been, as I mentioned, been going on for a few years here. This project is one they hope to construct this summer. So when they submitted an application, we took a look at whether or not this was in conflict or should be folded into the Mountain Master Plan, and we made the determination that it was not.
Okay, so the master plan, then, if they identify a new ski lift, then that would require another conditional use permit?
Correct. Right. Every new lift is going to require a conditional use permit. The master plan would allow for a few lifts to be constructed at a project level, and it's also going to identify program level, which is often of the future improvements that could come in after the fact.
Mr. Chair, a good clarification for this. The master plan looks at the ultimate build-out of the resort, and it looks at development outside of the existing developed area. This proposed project is within the existing proposed or the existing developed area, and on that basis, staff concluded it was appropriate for this project to go forward independent from the master plan, which may or may not ultimately be approved.
Wayne, you had a question?
I actually have three questions. And Jerry, if this is not something you want to address and you'd rather have the applicant, just let me know, because I just need some further clarification on three items that I mentioned. One is traffic. Based on what I'm reading, they were talking about, again, you talked about the volume of potential riders, it's somewhere around 200 at the peak, but it said only five vehicles per hour, and somehow that just doesn't compute to me really well about how 200 people fit in five cars.
Okay. For the purposes of evaluating traffic impacts, our engineers typically look at peak trips. So people will be coming and going. These are riders that typically show up in the afternoon. This is part of another experience that they have up there. And basically, what it equated to was five PM peak trips from people leaving at that particular time. So I can see how there would be a disconnect, but really, in deciding what the potential impacts would be, that's the figure that they arrived at.
I still have trouble processing that, because even if you took, you know, say 200 an hour over a peak period of time, say maybe three hours or whatever, that's still got to be more than 15 cars.
Oh, it's more cars throughout the day, for sure.
Right.
But it's not, but the PM peak hour is where we decide or determine cumulative impacts, where they're going to have a significant impact on the traffic system.
In addition to?
Right.
Right. Because I was just applying specifically that these people are coming to ride that, and if the 200 people are specifically coming to ride that.
Right. We did not assume that as a worst-case scenario, that people would be coming there just to ride the roller coaster. For the reasons that were outlined in the staff report, it's our, we anticipate that the traffic that's going to be there is traffic that would already be on the mountain. This is something, as I mentioned, you have to travel pretty extensively to get to on the mountain, so it's not something that many people would want to drive 10 or 20 miles to do an eight-minute ride.
So you're calling it an accessory use?
Right. It's very similar to just opening up another ski lift. Basically, that's the way we looked at it.
Mr. Chair, as a clarification, and as Jerry stated, to determine levels of significance for traffic, the county utilizes the PM peak hour trips. These are trips that occur between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00 PM. This does not mean that other trips won't occur during other times of day, but for levels of significance, the county looks at the trips generated between 4:00 and 6:00. And it's those trips, primarily employee trips, after the majority of the resort has closed, that would be generated by this proposed project.
Well, it didn't seem like there were that many employees involved in operating this, so I didn't, wouldn't, I wasn't really focused on that impact. I was focused on the people coming in for the actual ride. So again, I'm still trying to process that. Let's move on to my other issue. Noise. Obviously, noise is going to have, and topography is going to make a big difference on how noise travels and how great of an area it covers. And how did they determine, you know, again, they measured not just the operation of the equipment, but also the potential of people screaming as they're coming down the hill?
That's a good question.
And how did they determine that? Because we don't have people screaming down the hill right now and equipment operating. Did they go to Colorado and try to measure something that's there?
Right. In fact, the original proposal did not account for, I would call it accessory noise. It accounted for the noise of the coaster itself, and that was a common complaint we received on the original proposal. This noise analysis was based on a similar Alpine coaster, taking measurements of the coaster while people were riding it during the summer and the winter months. And so it took a peak, the greatest level, maximum level of noise, and then an average level of noise, and overlaid that onto the existing.
But again, topography is going to make a difference. It's going to be different.
Right. And in this case, it was a similar Alpine coaster, so it would have taken account of people riding uphill just as they are in this case, and then riding and then descending.
Did they take into consideration, because they said, okay, it's not going to be any more noise than would be a typical operation of the facility, is sort of the assessment I saw, it was not going to exceed the sound levels that are obviously required to maintain below that. Did they take into consideration that in the summer months, people are going to have their windows open so that, rather than winter, when the windows are closed, that that sound may carry into the structure more because of that?
Well, what we took into account was where the nearest residences would be, the nearest sensitive receptors would be 100 feet away. At that location, even if the windows are open, the noise would not exceed. At that location, even if the windows are open, the noise would not exceed the county standards.
Okay.
It's important to note, it's not to say it would not be audible. It's not to say you couldn't hear it.
Right.
But that it would not exceed county standards.
Okay.
Okay?
My last question is hours of operation. Right now, they're proposing, I believe, ten to four in the summer months, or ten to five, excuse me. And then they would have in the winter months, I think it's more like ten to four. Is the county going to say, look, you've got to stop this at five o'clock? And that's a hard line, it has to stop? Or can they put those kind of requirements on? What I'm afraid of is if this becomes very popular, that there may be a motivation by the facility to start stretching those hours and maybe even having lighting later in the evening. And that's obviously having even greater impact as it gets into evening hours with people being potentially disturbed.
Right, that sure would be an impact and that is something that staff considered. What, what we proposed in the staff report and also in the conditions of approval is that the hours be limited to daylight hours. It's easier to enforce than an hourly requirement. It would ensure that nighttime activities cannot occur with the roller coaster. So I think condition one limits it to daylight hours only.
Well, then it could go as late as seven potentially.
Sure.
Or maybe even eight. Because daylight, you know, is obviously much longer this time of year.
Well, the noise ordinance would come into effect at some point and so they couldn't generate noise past a certain hour. I think it's nine, nine or ten.
Some of it would be predicated on when the main lift shuts down.
That's a good point.
They've got to get this, they're only way to get home.
Right.
Yeah, unless it's so popular that it justifies, you know, keeping it open in a longer period of time. That's, that was just my concern and the potential impact of that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? No? Thank you, we may get you back, so don't count your blessings yet.
I won't go far.
I think we'll move on to the applicant, Andrew or whomever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, I'm Andrew Strain, representing North Star. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. We appreciate the staff's work and input in this. And we'd like to take you through a couple of the points on our behalf and try and answer your questions at the same time. As you know, we don't manufacture anything at North Star. What we do is, our base economy of the Tahoe region is, is tourism and outdoor recreation. And it is our mission to provide experiences for people that come to visit us from near and from far. And they come from all over the world, as you know, to enjoy this beautiful treasure. And so we're sensitive to that in proposing additional improvements. But we do continue to want to make improvements to not only the quality, but to the types of attractions that are available at the resort because that sustains, obviously, our own business, but it helps sustain the community too. And we believe that we are an important member of that community and take that responsibility very seriously in approaching fun, basically. I've heard Senator Reed say it at some of the Tahoe summits, that, you know, we don't manufacture cars, we don't make wine, at least that we tell anybody that we do. And we don't solve cancer problems or transplant brains. But we do provide the recreation for those people to come that do that and enjoy themselves here. So we are constantly looking for ways that we believe we can improve the quality of the recreation experience, which helps us locally and helps our region as a brand in terms of the attraction of Lake Tahoe. One of the things that we do that I would like to take you through quickly is we survey our guests. We survey them all winter long and in fact, we survey them in summer too. And one of the points I'd like to make sure and address is that we have existing summer operations today at North Star and we're relatively well-known for that. We have a mountain bike park, we have a great system of hiking trails. We have a wonderful village that hosts special events and has food and beverage and music and things that attract people to come there. We absolutely view this project as an addition to that and not as a standalone attraction. This will complement the things that we offer in the winter time. It's snow oriented, it is like a toboggan. Probably the hardest mission I have is to describe to you, what is this thing? And if you remember the days of the Alpine Slide, this is in fact, a modern version of the Alpine Slide. There used to be one at Boreal Ridge, for example, up on Donner Summit. Many, many ski areas have had Alpine Slides over the years. You leave a lot of skin in those tracks that were either concrete or reinforced fiberglass. This is a modern version of that. This uses technology to do the exact same thing, to take you up the hill on a tow and then to let you glide down through the forest. And that's what I want to make the point of, is we think this is a fabulous experience for people who ski and snowboard and even those who don't. When families come to North Star, and that's really what we market ourselves as, they have the opportunity to do this together. As opposed to the kids are going skiing, we're going to eat lunch, we might connect later and we might meet for the evening. This allows families to do this activity together as a group. And what I particularly like about it, because I've, I have ridden ours that we have in Colorado, it allows you the experience of flying through the trees and introducing people to the forest. And for many people, this is the first time they've been up on the forest. They don't all necessarily come all the time to that. In other settings, it's the first time they've ever been to a national forest. So we think we are going to also make connections with people as lifetime supporters and enjoyers of our forested environments. And I think that's a good thing. We survey our guests, this is a highlight of summer surveys, to measure their satisfaction with how we're doing. I think every good company does this. And to say, what could we do to get your support or to go back to your own home and tell your friends and family, you've got to go up there and try this, it's fabulous. So we're always on the lookout for what we can do for our guests and what will bring them back and what will make them, as we call it, our net supporters. We're interested in that, that helps us succeed. This is the methodology, we've done it for a couple of years now and it's part of the new ownership. And we do this at all our resorts, winter and summer. You can see we do these intercept surveys of our guests, not that unusual, you've probably seen it happen before. In two thousand and twelve summer, we actually completed a thousand of them. What our guests told us, on a scale of one through five, in two thousand and eleven, fifty-two percent told us it is important or extremely important to us that you offer additional events or activities at North Star. In two thousand and twelve, that number went up to sixty-one percent. We want to be responsive to our guests, that's our market. And that's the market of the North Shore in general. We prompted them with ideas. What does this mean? What are activities that you would like to see here? Because it's important to establish yes or no, and then it's important to establish what is it that you want to see? In asking our guests these specific questions, zip line, Alpine coaster, rock climbing wall, tubing, four wheels, four-wheelers, those are all outdoor oriented activities. Those are at the top of our list of things that people said they wanted to see us add at North Star and would influence their interest in returning. We love repeat customers. It's so much less expensive and easier to keep an existing customer than it is to go out and recruit a new customer. And I think that's the same with literally every business that's out there. We love loyal customers and we want them to love us. And we think by being responsive, that will do that. Those things that we ask, okay, if, if you're not a net supporter of ours, what can we do to gain your support and to become a net supporter? And more activities, as you can see, are at the top of the list for us. Food options, trail maintenance, trails, price, as you can see, it starts to step down. But having more activities is absolutely one way that we can be responsive to what our guests have told us.
You need to have more miscellaneous.
We can even have more miscellaneous. And then you dig into the content analysis of what that is. And it's, oftentimes it's insightful and it's illuminating to see what it is the guest is up to. If I could ask my staff member what I'd like to be able to do for you. Jen Mater will pass out to you trail maps. And I do this not so you can think about, oh, you've got them, thank you. Not so you can think about renewing or buying a season pass, that's not the intent here. But what I want to do is suggest to you that we have cited this proposal in the middle of the hub of activities at the mid-mountain. For those of you, and I know some of you are familiar with North Star, but I don't know if all of you are, we have actually put this on purpose for a couple of reasons, in the middle of the mountain. This is what the scene looks like in the winter time. You can see a half-pipe up there on this, on the left-hand side of the image for snowboarding. You can see the concentration of people here. This is what the mid-mountain day lodge looks like. We're not going to win any architectural awards for it, but it is functional in terms of being the hub. And what I want to make sure and stress to you is at the middle of the mountain, which is right here on your trail maps, this is the hub of activity both winter and summer at mid-mountain. People come up from the Village Gondola or from the Village Express chairlift. We operate the gondola in the summertime. It's also a sightseeing attraction for people who've never been on a wire rope lift before, they get a thrill out of that. And this is in fact, the hub of our activity. As I pointed out, this is what it looks like on a busy day. So part of our mission was to make sure we cite this facility so it works, it's not in conflict with the existing uses. And this is a picture that Jerry showed you. The base of this facility where you actually access and get on the sleds is right over here. It's just out of the way of the lift maze right here. One of the points I'd like to make is when this facility began the planning process back in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, it was slated to start and stop down at the village, down close to the residential units. And that prompted an awful lot of concern from our neighbors. And they're represented primarily through the North Star Property Owners Association, NPOA. Today, you have a letter of support in your packets from them. We have moved this facility in response to their concerns about noise and nighttime lighting. And I'll, I want to be on record now that we do not propose to light this for nighttime operations. We don't think that's the right thing to do in this situation. We do not and will not propose lighting it. But we've been responsive and I think that's one of the successes of the local planning process, is you listen to your neighbors and you listen to their concerns, figure out which ones are real and do something about that in terms of the site planning process. That's how it's supposed to work, I believe. You've seen this picture already, there are opportunities for ski under. Question came up, there are access routes that come off the mountain. The top of the Vista Lift right here, there is a skier bridge that will be about twenty-six feet near for the route to go over so that you can get off the lift and ski out to the trails. It's not in any ski trail, it's not in conflict of that. We realize we will need to fence it off properly and you move with the snow level. Part of the height for the under crossings is necessary for snow cats and a changing snow depth. Part of the challenge of being in the ski business is you have to manage to two different finished floor elevations. There's a winter one and there's a summer one. Your guess is as good as ours about what the winter one's going to be. It can be ten feet, it can be two feet. In the summer, it's a little more predictable. So there are crossings here that will elevate the track. Part of it will be exciting and fun for the user on the toboggan. But part of it is functional too for the operations, to be able to get back and forth. There's a cross-country ski trail that will cross underneath it near the lower part of the run. And there's a skier access at the top of the run. One point that I would like to share with you, you'll see this again at some point in the future, I hope, is several years ago, our predecessors conducted a comprehensive resort-wide biological inventory and assessment. This is a fabulous piece of work and should be done at all resorts, I believe. They were able to define five different zones of biologic activity and sensitivity from A through E. A being the least suitable and E being the most suitable. The ski resort and the village are primarily in the most developed and least sensitive zones. The village is here, we're in Zone A, which is the developed resort community that has residences and has the commercial village. The, almost the entire mountain today, these black lines represent ski lifts, is in Zone B, which is intensive ski area development. We worked with the Conservation groups and the Conservation Biology Institute in order to develop this map. This is our blueprint for future growth. How does the resort respond to the resources that are on-site? Forest, who lives in the forest? What are the species that live there? Where are water features? Where's surface water? Where are rare plants? Where are wildlife? Issues of concern, special interest species, goshawk, will-o'-fly catcher. We've mapped that out first before preparing the master plan. This is how you're supposed to do it. And I would tell you that our flyer proposal responds very well to that. As I mentioned above, the fault in the ski resort is in Zone B, which is set for intensive ski area development. As you get up to the fringes of the resort where there are mostly forests and forest meadows, we move down into Zones D and E, which are more conservation, less recreation. The flyer is cited right at the confluence of Zone A and Zone B. That from a biologic standpoint, I think you'll see a letter in your packet where there was an assessment done by an independent third party working for Sierra Watch and MAP, concluded this is the right place for it. If you're going to put it in from an environmental standpoint, this is the right place for that to be. We believe there are no physical environmental impacts associated with this and support the findings of fact and conclusions that are in the staff report and in the mitigated neck deck. One issue that I would like to point out is noise that was raised. Our clearest noise, our most, let's see if I can get this to go back. The sensitive noise receptor that was brought up was a future residential development parcel that's right here. It's outlined in red, near the base of the flyer alignment. That's owned by the East West Partners, who have a letter of support for this project in your packets. Today, that's our mid-mountain maintenance site. It's not a quiet place today. That's where all the snow cats, all the over-the-snow vehicles, and in the summer, all the rubber tired vehicles go through. So that site today is developed as accessory to the ski resort. In the future, at some point, it may be residential. And East West Partners, North Star Mountain Properties, the same group, has a letter of support in your packet. Lastly, as I said, my biggest challenge oftentimes is to be able to describe to people, what is this thing? What is a Alpine coaster? What is a forest flyer? And this, we think, will bring a great attraction and complement the additional, the attractions that we have there now. One thing I'd like to point out about traffic that I think is worth mentioning is the total ride time up and down, as Jerry mentioned, is nine minutes. People do not come to our resort for nine minutes, they come for the day. They come to ski and snowboard, that's several hours worth of time. We hope that they'll buy a ticket and they'll do this as part of that, stay with us. But they come for hours. They come and they stay for a week at a time. Our destination guests and our homeowners were really a second home community in many ways. We have very few permanent residents in North Star. We also fill up in the summertime and in the winter, peak periods, with people who stay on-site. Selfishly, we want to keep those people on-site. We don't want them to get in their cars and leave. We want to provide enough of a critical mass of attractions for them to be able to eat, to drink, to have fun, to buy something in the retail stores, to take a ski lesson, to do this as a family activity that they don't want to go. We don't want them to go to our competitors, we want them to stay on property. I believe that helps the traffic situation in our region. In the summertime, people come to the mountain bike park for hours at a time, not for minutes. This is not something that will generate much, if any, standalone traffic because it's a nine-minute activity. Sure, it's new and it's exciting and we'll see some change from that, we hope to see some uptick from that. Absolutely, we wouldn't be doing this otherwise. But it is part of a suite of activities that we offer and not intended to attract people off of Interstate eighty with big billboards that you have to come and ride this as your only thing to do. We want people that come and stay and bring their families, stay on property and take advantage of everything we have to offer. I'd be pleased to try and answer any questions. I do want to point out that from our local organizations in North Star, you have letters of support from virtually every one of them. The North Star Property Owners, you have it from N C S D, you have it from, and that's the Community Services District, there's a letter in your packet. The Ritz-Carlton's provided a letter of support and East West Partners doing business with North Star Mountain Properties. The one issue that did come up that I'll finish with is issue raised about tree clearing. This is a very selective tree removal. Seventy-five, I think, was the total count, over thousands and thousands of trees. We have actually eight thousand acres within the resort, most of it's forested. We are however, working with the Sugar Pine Foundation that's based in South Lake Tahoe and the North Star Mountain Properties Charitable Foundation to plant twenty-two hundred sugar pine seedlings. Most of our forest, as you know, are overstocked and need forest treatments. We do that as a regular course of business because it's the right thing to do. We work with North Star Fire and we work with the Property Owners Association to put money and resources on the ground to maintain those forests. That's our golden goose, are the forests. There are places though, however, where replanting does make sense. And to do that, this summer, we're working with those two groups to plant twenty-two hundred pine seedlings, sugar pines, that we think will more than offset the loss of seventy-five trees that are going to be cleared for this alignment. I'd be pleased to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to take so long.
Well, I wondered if you were going to wind down. Do you have an overlay map? You probably don't have one you can show us now, but I would be interested in seeing sometime an overlay of where all the bike trails are on the mountain and.
There is a summer map and I'm sorry I didn't bring that for you. If, let me see if I can get back to it, I can point it out on the. And I can also ask Jen to point out for you where the forks of the creek are. She knows them better than I do, I always call them by the wrong name. The mountain bike park today is similar to the ski resort, it's in Zone B. It starts with a ride up from the village on the gondola. You can also ride up, there's a trail that comes from the village up to mid-mountain. Then you take your bike over and get on the Zephyr Lift and ride that up. The Zephyr Lift's here and you can ride that up. There's an entire series of trails then that comes back and forth pretty much between Zephyr. You can get to the top of the mountain, Mount Plomo also, between summer maintenance roads and trails that we've constructed. The trails are for the most part in Zone B, they do lead. They do leak a little bit over here into Zone C, the Fiber Board Freeway, that's sort of the dividing line between the basin and outlet basin areas, the Marthas Valley. Snakes along the top of the resort, and we intersect with that too. Does that answer?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I think it's important to know what all the activities are that are going on there so that they...
They also hub out of mid-mountain.
My colleagues aren't quite as well-versed.
Yes, here's, you can, you can actually get a look on the summer picture, mountain bike trails versus summer maintenance roads. You can see them snaking back and forth across the hillside as they come back down to the mid-mountain village. And it's possible to either download on the gondola, or most of the time, people just like to ride back to the village. There's a couple of trails that take you back down.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I had a couple, maybe just follow-up.
You've already asked quite a few.
Well, they didn't get answers.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, real tough questions here too, I'm sure. There's, there's kind of a zigzag road that parallels, parallels the, it looks like a zigzag road.
No.
That's the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Summer maintenance road, a cross-country trail in part of it, in the summertime.
And it appeared that part of this project is a realignment of that road in someplace?
No, in fact, what we would like to be able to do, Mr. Johnson, is build from the existing road that does serve the top station of that lift, a spur road, to get to the top station of the flyer itself.
Okay. And that's where the, you're going to use an area that is previously disturbed?
It is, and it's a place where skiers get off the top of that lift today, the Village Express Lift, and then ski off and get to the main body of the runs.
Okay.
It is important that this will not be in a ski run. It will be adjacent to a ski run.
Okay. And then, yeah, we'd like to see where the drainages are.
Yeah, maybe I could ask, if Jen could come up, she can identify herself and...
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Jen Mader. Let's see, we'll go back to the map that has the drainages. Okay, so the overflow from the reservoir is west Marthas Creek. And then, we have another stream corridor that goes right through mid-mountain down to the North Star Village, and that's the west fork of west Marthas Creek. So project drainage from the forest flyer, it's mostly existing sheet flow or remain that way. There's very little impervious surface. And so, through sheet flow, it's conveyed into the west fork of west Marthas Creek, which does run to the east side of the North Star Village and does not, is not a component of the village infrastructure, drainage infrastructure.
I'm also prepared to discuss that too, in light of the drainage report.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, still a little bit confused just because of the names, the west and the east and the west.
The west, 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 east.
And you're talking about a reservoir?
It's there.
Right, so...
And what's the purpose of that reservoir?
It provides domestic water for North Star, as well as snowmaking water. And so, it's, both NCSD and North Star Resort pull out of it, and the, so the Marthas Creek's system through here, it runs into the valley, Marthas Creek, but they're, all the fingers are, were up high in the watershed, so west fork, west Marthas Creek, west Marthas Creek. And then you get over here, and this is middle Marthas Creek. So...
And so, you know, maybe we're going to hear more, but there's discussion, there's a subdivision called Aspen Grove up there someplace. And what, I mean, and I don't know if it's the same reservoir, there's an issue with the reservoir. And so, I just, you know, maybe we'll hear about it.
Mr. Chair, that is a different reservoir that's being discussed in association with the Aspen Grove project.
Okay.
What's being discussed in conjunction with Aspen Grove is a retention pond, which is located below the parking lot in the village.
Okay.
So this is an existing on-mountain reservoir that has been in existence and used for, for years.
Okay, that, that's good, explains that. And so then, the east fork of the west Marthas Creek, when it runs into the west fork of the west Marthas Creek, is that below the Aspen Grove subdivision, where the fork is?
Yes, yes. See it on the map there, it's just, so these, these two forks join about right there, just above where North Star Drive crosses west Marthas Creek at that point.
Okay, where's the Aspen Grove subdivision?
So Aspen Grove, here's North Star Village, they're right about there.
Adjacent to the village?
Adjacent, adjacent to the village, north of the village.
Okay.
South of the village.
South, sorry.
South, okay.
Yeah.
Or north, north of the village.
Well, see, north is not up on that map, that's what's confusing.
That's the confusion with ski maps. We always want to put the top of the mountain at the top of the page regardless of what compass direction it is.
Right. And so this would be north of the village?
Yeah, the upper part of the map is the south, the lake is up there in the roof.
Okay. Well, that gives me a picture of what we're talking about here, so that's, that's helpful.
Could we talk about hours of operation?
Yes.
Some of the letters that we got really wanted, there was a number of them that asked that to limit you from operating, some said four o'clock, you're proposing five o'clock for the summer period now. But obviously, the county's giving you quite a bit of leeway to just operate this during daylight hours, so you could, again, go to seven or eight o'clock potentially at night. Do you anticipate that that's going to happen? That there's a possibility that you would go beyond the five o'clock time?
In the summertime, in the wintertime, darkness closes in pretty early, as you know, particularly in the, in the middle or the heart of the winter, and it gets colder, and we don't think we'd have much demand for that activity after dark in the wintertime. But in the summertime, we would like to not foreclose that option because we don't exactly know how it's going to perform. We would like that opportunity, if it is successful and people do want to ride in the early evening hours, we would like that opportunity to not, commit to not doing that right now.
But in the application that says five o'clock?
And, and then it has been changed, the staff may want to elaborate on that. We had amended that in the staff report.
I guess I missed that. To what time?
Sunset.
Okay, so seven or eight.
But not at night. We're sunset.
I'm not really too concerned about the winter months. I don't think that's going to be an issue. I'm just concerned about summer and the potential impacts from operating a fairly lengthy period of time. Now, if somebody had said that you may shut down things earlier in the day, and that wouldn't justify continuing to operate this late, but it sounds like you're, all your trails are still open at that point in the evening hours, right?
You know, the bike park closes today, in today's operation, the bike park closes at the end of the afternoon. It has to do with the visit patterns that our customers come and, and utilize the facility in the summertime for. We may find that changing over time, and we didn't want to limit ourselves without first knowing what the situation was going to be.
Do you foresee that at, let's say from that five o'clock to seven or eight o'clock hour, that that has a greater impact on the people in the, that are living in the area?
We really don't. We don't see an impact with that. In fact, in some of the activities that happen in North Star Village, we have festivals and events that occur regularly throughout the summer, and those extend on into the early evening hours, and we think that would make a terrific complement for people who are in the village for a jazz festival or for a food and wine tasting, that they could then at that point be able to access and take a ride on the flyer during their visit.
You said you have no intentions of putting lighting on this.
We do not.
I guess my question would be to staff, if they did at some point decide to put lighting on this, would they have to come to get a permit for that?
They would, they would need to return, request a modification of this permit to add that.
Would that be at a staff level?
No, no, we'd be back before you for consideration. And as I mentioned, the condition stipulates that the ride is only accessed, only able to run during daylight hours, so we didn't anticipate a need for illumination.
See, one more question, this mainly just for information. In the wintertime, when you have one of these big snow events, I guess, do you anticipate the snow ever getting above the track and how do you clean it?
We saw that in Colorado during the big snow year, where the ride would not necessarily be open for a certain period of time. There's part of us that says, boy, we hope we have that problem, and that we've got lots and lots of snow because that will, that tends to bring the customers. When it's raining like heck in the Bay Area, that tends to make people think, we got to go to the Sierra, the snow's fabulous. So yes, there will be times when the, the facility would not be open while we dig it out.
Okay. How far off the ground is it?
The average height varies between three and eight feet, and I think it's important to point out that in general, it does follow the topography and the slope, and uses that slope as part of its, you know, accomplishing its mission. There are places, as I mentioned, where I think we've got five designated crossings for either skiers to get off and get out of the way, or for snow cats and snowmobiles to be able to go back and forth, say, to the maintenance shop.
Okay, that answers it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Andrew, okay, thank you. If that concludes, does staff have any more they want to say at this time? I guess not. We'll go to the public then and, and ask the public to come forward and, and tell us any comments they might have regarding this project. Oh, it must be Ellie, isn't it? Good afternoon, good morning still.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, representing Friends of Tahoe Vista. I'm here today to ask you to deny this request, but instead have the applicant include this recreational amenity into the forthcoming North Star Mountain Master Plan. They have built two similar forest flyers under a master plan called Peak Six. The mitigated negative deck does not provide enough conclusive environmental analysis and must be studied under the master plan process. The EIR will examine both project and program-level components, identify feasible mitigation measures, and will evaluate the potential for the cumulative impacts. And I bring that up, this is emphasized by the proposal of the Highlands Residential Project that's going to be just 100 feet away from this, so cumulative effects must be considered. At the very least, if this negative deck is approved, I think you should add conditions to the permit for the operation hours till five o'clock, and then maybe come back and make an adjustment to that. But to begin with, it should be stated at five o'clock for the summertime hours. The VMT mitigation fee is at $29,000 for the five proposed new employees. I think a traffic assessment should be a condition of permit also, and adjusted for additional mitigation fees if you find that there's additional traffic. You received a lot of compelling comments on the 21st and the 22nd that were in arrata today, and I'm concerned with those coming in at the prescribed time of May 22nd with a hearing today that you didn't get to fully analyze what those letters said from the Regional Advisory Council member, Megan Chalimmy, a group of Aspen Grove residents authored by Greg Gatto, a North Star resident, Debbie Fields, myself. I sent in 11 pages. I will talk about six of those items today. I do want to read you an excerpt from a PR News Wire dated March 6th, Vale Resorts Inc., "Vale Resorts Announce Record Capital for Calendar 2013." Highlights for, of the calendar year capital expenditure are Epic Discovery. The first phase of Epic Discovery, the company's summer mountain activity plan includes approximately $25 million to transform six of the mountains, Vale, Beaver, Creek, Breckenridge, Keystone, Heavenly, and North Star. Plans for each mountain include a zipline, rope courses, signature climbing walls, forest flyers, et cetera. My concern here is you're going to do a mitigated negative deck for one amenity. If they propose a zipline, is it going to come through? Again, another case for a master plan and cumulative impacts looking at the mountain. The forest designation does not define the forest flyer as an accessory use. I'd like an explanation how you can permit a non-allowed use that is different operations. And then there is a letter from the California Department of Forestry that must be obtained for the improvement plan. I'm not sure when that comes into account here. The forest flyer is located in a state responsibility area, subject to fire protection regulations established by the State Board of Forestry. On page two of the 26 pages, I read the negative deck and responded to each item by page number. It's called Previous Environmental Documentation, SEQUA Section 15168, relating to program EIRs that indicate significant activities involved in site-specific operations. The agency would use a written checklist or similar device to document the evaluation, determine whether the environmental effects of the operation were covered in an earlier EIR. The forest flyer has not been analyzed in the Marthas Valley Community Plan or the Placer County General Plan, so I don't know why this should be tiered off of this previous environmental documentation. On page seven of 26, the proposed tracks will vary in above-ground height, between two and eight feet, as mentioned, but today I heard 26 feet in some spots. Why wasn't that not stated in the negative deck documentation? Mitigation measure on page 11 of 26, design/site review process and/or development review committee may be a condition of approval. Well, what triggers either one of those? That language should have been included in the negative deck also. On page 22 of 26, environmental issues one, two, and five state that they're less than significant. Cumulative impacts of future projects within the North Star Master Plan have not been analyzed. Parking capacity has not been analyzed for the mitigated negative deck because it's only of those five, but when you add the Highlands Project, any future amenities, I think that traffic analysis should at least be looked at in out-years with the master plan, and additional mitigation fees may need to be paid. And finally, the mandatory findings of significance on page 24 of 26, Section E, does the project have the potential to degrade the quality of the environment? The negative deck says no. I say yes. The forest floor is going to be denuded in a 10 to 15-foot swath to bring this trail through. Yes, some revegetation will be put back in, but removal of vegetation does disturb the quality of the environment. Does the project have impacts that are individually limited but cumulatively considered? When viewed in connection with the effects of past projects, the effects of other current projects, and the effects of probable future projects? The mitigated negative deck said no. I say yes. The development potential of the master plan is a probable project. And I will close with the frequently asked questions section of the master plan. It states, "How do the proposed project improvements move North Star in the direction of more of a destination resort than a day ski area? The proposed project improvements will provide resort guests with a wider, more diverse array of terrain offerings, recreational activities facilitating an improved extended vacation experience for the destination and day use guest. Is it not a recreational amenity that's being added here? It must be studied in the master plan. The applicant can't have it both ways." Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. Anyone else?
I am Bob Thornton, I'm the president of Aspen Grove. I left my house at 6 o'clock this morning from Santa Cruz to be here. We are part of the NPOA, North Star Property Owners Association. Aspen Grove did write a letter to NPOA requesting that this not be approved, and they still went ahead without letting, making our voice heard, so I'm here to make that be known. We do not want this project to go forward. I was going to go over several items that my predecessor did about this Epic Discovery, in that I have counted 20 different components that that one set of words involves, which includes off-road SUV adventures. Now, the cumulative effect of all of this, I think, has to be addressed. We also did send a more specific letter in the comment period that addresses the legal issues that we see that are being neglected to look at. But Aspen Grove has the unfortunate distinction of being the closest downhill neighbor to North Star Vale. Many of you may know, apparently you do, that we have been involved in a litigation with North Star and Vale and the, many of the... North Star and Vale, and the many of the other parties are involved in the development of the new village since 2008. We recently received a decision confirming improperly-installed retention pond uphill from us that was and still is diverting water across our property, damaging our infrastructure, and disturbing, contributing to the death of many of our trees. And just to address the drainage, all the drainage that we're talking about here is surface runoff. In the court hearings that we had in our trial, the defendant noted that 100% of all the moisture that infiltrates onto Mount Pluto runs through Aspen Grove. So even though it may be affecting maybe the diverted, whatever lands on that mountain affects Aspen Grove and our watershed. Former pristine Aspen Grove within Aspen Grove, which is what we're named after, is now a swamp littered with dead aspens, one of which, according to the defendant's arborist who testified in court, that it equaled the largest aspen on record. And she was also amazed at some of the additional aspens that were the girth of the base and the length. And we've also been informed by our local arborist that they believe we have local Indian carvings on many of these aspens. Most of them are dead, laying on the ground. In the course of the process of me and our association being involved in this lawsuit, I've become intimately involved in the values, the Vale resorts outside of their marketing Vale. And what I've come to understand is that I don't think they have any values other than pure greed. It is my belief that they do not care about the environment. They clearly have no respect for rules and regulations and/or signed agreements that they make, nor do they understand the concept of taking responsibility for their mistakes after a court has even confirmed they've made a mistake. The appearance of stewardship or concern about the environment is purely marketing, good marketing on their part. It is my opinion that this application that was just filed less than 30 days ago is an excellent example of how insidiously manipulative and calculating North Star Vale can be. The forest flyer clearly falls under the project description of the scope of the master plan. However, in an attempt to avoid full environmental review of the Epic Discovery Program, including the proper analysis of all the potential cumulative impacts of the entire development, North Star has submitted a piecemeal application of this minor project. So as to by the time the master plan is being considered, they will have most of the Epic Discovery installed with no full environmental analysis with an EIR, which is required by SEQA. I believe it is very suspicious that this project has processed in such a very short time with only one day in between comment period and this planning commission meeting. I don't know how you could review all the information adequately. Add to that the absurdity of the traffic calculation stated. I don't see how this project should go forward. How is it that this application has even been processed? I don't understand. And additionally, I'd like to make a comment about the noise issue. In Aspen Grove, in the winter, if you're outside at night, you can hear the groomers on the side of the mountain. I don't really look forward to the hearing screaming kids in Aspen Grove in the evenings or even during the day, to be honest with you. There are currently outstanding co-violations at North Star property related to the retention basin, where the court has held must be removed. Instead of fast-tracking additional entitlements for North Star, the county in North Star should be focusing on resolving outstanding violations, especially with, which are violations that have obvious and significant impacts to their neighbor's property. It is inconceivable that the county would approve additional discretionary entitlements to North Star when North Star continues to act in a bad-faith relationship existing in the county's violations. The county should suspend processing of any North Star projects until all existing violations are remediated. This concludes my comments, and I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Any questions above? It doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment?
My name is Kim Storm. I live in Rockland. I am a resident of this county, but I'm also homeowner at North Star, specifically Aspen Grove. First of all, I have made some notes. I wrote all of you a letter which I didn't have a chance, caring for elderly parents, to get emailed to you until two days ago, so possibly you haven't read it, but I'd be happy to briefly go over it in a minute. But before I start, I'd like to speak to all of you about the credibility of this man. Bob Thornton is the president of our homeowners association, and he has led our battle with North Star and East West and all the entities involved, along with a handful of very dedicated board members, to fight the fight, to rectify the problem and save our properties at Aspen Grove from terrible damage. We not only have lost our Aspen Grove, our trees, but we have elderly owners who have the first floor and the basements of their units flooded, where they've had to bring in drains and pipes. Never mind the beauty of Aspen Grove, which is part of North Star. Somebody referred, oh, is North Star, I think it was maybe Mr. Johnson, said, is it an older, an older subdivision? Yeah, it's probably older. It's not new like that gorgeous village that was just built, but it's substantial and it's nice, and many people come and enjoy. I'm not only an owner there, but I rent on the North Star through property management, through their rental program. My husband and I are die-hard North Star fans. We love it. We've been there for 15 years. We'll be there till the end of our lives. But what's happened with Aspen Grove is almost a precursor to my disgust with what is happening I just have a few very important points, and I'm sorry that gentleman just left because I would like you all to hear. First of all, in credit to North Star, it's a fabulous facility. No, they don't manufacture, but they do provide quality, quality recreation. It is a place we should all be proud of here in Placer County. As far as, I'll give them a little credit in their planning that they moved it from the village up to mid-mountain, but as far as anything else is concerned, I am saying, why? Why are we doing this? I question the speed of North Star's expansion with that village. I love it there, but look what's happened because of it, and look what's been just pushed over to the wayside because of this little tiny Aspen Grove community that's been affected, such a small part in the money factor and the profit factor of North Star. North Star's huge, it's making big bucks, and now they want to bring this thing in to draw more people? You don't think we're gonna have noise? You don't think we're gonna have parking problems? Why do we need this? We don't need an amusement park at North Star. It's a ski facility for families. You want your kids to ride a roller coaster or have this fabulous experience of going through the trees? Go to Vermont. I've been on one of these. They are wonderful, but they don't belong at North Star. And in credit to Mr. Thornton, please listen to his words. I think the man has a lot to say in regards to what's happening up at North Star. This room should be filled with residents that are affected by what's going on up there, but people work, they have jobs. We are being assessed $5,000 to $6,000 a crack to fight this litigation. I have sat in court. I have listened to these attorneys. They are ruthless. We're talking about correcting a holding pond, stopping the water, which court ordered they did, but diverting it. It never should have been there in the first place. Who approves it? Aren't you the planning commission? Wasn't thought given to that? I'm concerned as a resident, too. We need you. We need you to look at all this and not accept all this information this woman just provided. How can you digest that in one or two or three days? You need time. So if nothing else, put this to the side and get the facts. Now, I really did not plan to speak a lot today, rather just be here as a show of support. But you know, the biggest thing here also to consider is that this application is submitted pending the resolution of a violation of existing conditions of approval for the North Star Village. We have a Superior Court ruling and finding and a statement of decision in relation to the retention pond, and they are in violation. Processing of the current application should be suspended pending resolution of the outstanding violations. Now, the reason I read that is this. We already have a problem up there, and it's a big one, and it's being ignored and pushed aside. I plead with all of you to consider the facts of the regular person, not just the big bucks. We are Placer County. I moved here from Almondin Valley and witnessed what the city's all about in Silicon Valley, and I'm still connected. My son is marrying a high-tech, wonderful woman. But I came here because I valued honesty and the value of life and the beauty of our land, and I plead with you to please look beyond the skeleton of this shady proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess we'll close the public comment period and come back to staff, and I guess I'm tempted to ask our council if in any way that legal war that was going on should affect what we're doing here today.
No. The lawsuit that's being referred to is a private third-party lawsuit. It did not include the county. The order that was issued obviously cannot bind the county because the county was not a party. The county has been aware of this lawsuit. Mr. Johnson, in fact, wrote a letter to the attorneys for Aspen Grove on March 29, 2012, when the question was first asked regarding violations of the North Star conditional use permit. He determined that there were no violations. Just for the commission's background, there is a provision in the zoning code that prohibits the processing of an application should there be outstanding zoning violations unless the application is to resolve those. I think that's what the residents here are referring to. Based on Mr. Johnson's determination that there were no violations, the application was permitted to be processed. I'd also note that a drainage study was specifically required for this particular project. The county's position is that we're not a party to that lawsuit. However, from a secret perspective, we are bound to ensure that there are no potential impact of this particular project. For that reason, the drainage study was performed. A letter was obtained from the consultant who performed this drainage study on April 5, 2013, when we asked a specific question as to whether this did impact and in any way impact the Aspen Grove subdivision. The consultant's conclusion, upon which we as the lead agency are entitled to rely upon as an excerpt of opinion, stated no, there was no impact to that particular subdivision. Therefore, while there is this ongoing litigation, and we don't discount it in any means, it doesn't involve the county, and the commission is entitled to look at this project on its own merits and review it from that perspective.
I think that's a pretty good explanation. Did you have some comments on the drainage itself, DPW?
Yeah, I won't get into the technical issues brought up in the drainage report and how it explains why they're not connected, unless you'd like me to. But I did want to point out that we did also ensure mitigation of all effects off-site by number condition, condition number nine, which requires complete retention or detention of any peak flows, and that would be what would affect anything downstream. So that will be mitigated through a further detailed report done during the improvement plans. And in addition, we have the support via letter from the Flood Control District, Placer County Flood Control District, that there would not be any downstream impacts to anything.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Diane?
Yeah, I guess I kind of, you know, we heard a lot of, I guess, concern about cumulative impacts. And in one area, in traffic, I noticed on page 69, we're talking about, consider the effects of past, the effects of current, and the effects of probable future projects. And of course, the future is oftentimes unknown, so you're just really conjecturing there, but like the discussion of traffic, it was mentioned the Highland project. I guess I'm guessing, since the Highland project is apparently a proved project, that was considered in the cumulative impact analysis, but in terms of the finding in the neg deck, what other specific cumulative impacts were looked at in terms of making the finding we have here?
For this project, staff looked at the build-out of the Martis Valley area, of which North Star is a part of. And as Mr. Haas pointed out in his presentation, as it relates to traffic, from a cumulative impact perspective, the uphill capacity right now at North Star is approximately 34,000 persons per hour. This project will have an uphill capacity of 200 persons per hour. Over the build-out, not only of North Star, but of the Martis Valley area, the cumulative traffic impacts are nominal and do not raise to a level of significance as defined by the county or the state of California.
Okay. Are there any other, now we're talking about the overall master plan, which is, you know, it's coming to bloom, but it's not bloomed yet. And so were there any other specific categories or that of cumulative impacts were considered in relationship to that?
Let me make one clarification with respect to the analysis of cumulative impacts. When you have a project, the duty to analyze the cumulative impacts has to do with those impacts that are found to be potentially significant. Those that are found to be less than significant, there is no duty under SEQA to analyze some of those from cumulative because practically speaking, you're stating there is no impact at all. So with respect to the negative declaration and the scope of the cumulative, it would be on those items that are identified within the initial study as potentially significant, not those that are identified in no impact or the less than significant. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
So other than the hydrological impacts and traffic impacts, there weren't any of hydrological impacts and traffic impacts, there weren't any that really popped up to be potentially significant?
Correct.
Could, we asked the applicant to come back. I do not want to talk about the retention, because that retention pond is a completely separate issue, as our legal counsel has told us. So there was some talk of some maybe additional activities on the hill, potentially a zip line that you're, I guess, something that you're going to do at some of the facilities. I don't know what you, this is something you're going to do there.
Yeah, let me see if I can clarify that for you, Mr. Nader, that those are aspirational statements about what we hope the future will hold, and not all of those activities were intended to apply to every resort. Those are selective. We have essentially seven mountain resorts, four in Colorado and three in California. There's only so much capital, you know, there are only so many mouths to feed, and we've really concentrated the bulk of our summer activities at three. Vale Mountain and Breckenridge in Colorado and Heavenly Mountain Resort on the South Shore in Lake Tahoe. The other resorts may have one activity like is before you today, but the bulk of that planning, where you saw, heard the details from the news release, were intended to apply to those three resorts only.
And I'm assuming that obviously if you, that ever changed in the future, that you were adding more activities on the mountain, that would have to come back as for approval.
That's my understanding, yes.
And just to clarify a little bit more on this point, the duty to analyze cumulative impacts relates to current, past, and reasonably foreseeable projects. Reasonably foreseeable does not include aspirational-type hopes. It's whether we have, for example, the master plan permit, which is an active permit, or, and that's generally how we define that, is permits that have been submitted to the county are considered to be reasonably foreseeable because there's an actual tangible permit there. Business plans, aspirations for 10 years out in a business plan are not necessarily considered to be reasonable foreseeable projects for purposes of the cumulative analysis under SEQA.
Okay. Andrew, maybe one other question if I could. We've talked about this new master plan to some degree, and I guess I'm probably the only one in this room that was here when we did the original North Star plan back in, I think it was early 70s, late 60s. In fact, I recently saw a picture of Chester Gibbs and me meeting with Dick Engelhardt out in the meadow to discuss it, and it wasn't a shovel full of anything happening, any rate. So it's been a long, long experience, and I guess my question to you is, what types of things do you envision taking place in this new master plan that's being talked about?
You know, we don't have that up, obviously, before you today, and I'll have to say, I haven't heard anyone say Chester Gibbs's name for a long time. I've forgotten about him until you mentioned him. But as Michael alluded to earlier, what sorts of skiing, winter activities primarily, can we do that are out beyond where we would say the existing ski area, the existing footprint of the area operates today? Whether or not we come forward with seasonal activities, we're going to look at those, but there's nothing specific that we've got detailed today. It's, it is still purely aspirational in terms of what do we do to help become more of a year-round destination resort.
What do you see the time frame for that being?
Well, part of it depends on the timing of the master plan itself, and I know, I don't want to get too far into that because I know it's not before you today, but that process is, will take its own time, and I believe will be back before you again sometime in the process in terms of hearings and taking comment on that, but that's obviously a couple of years out in our
Okay, okay.
... scheme of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah. Okay, well, we've reached the pinnacle of the process. I don't think I have any more questions. I'm sorry that this process is somewhat being tainted by the fact that there's a major disagreement going on between homeowners and applicant, because that makes it difficult to keep a clear view of what we're really looking at and the impacts that it is, but I think they have asked us to consider that, and I don't think that that's necessarily where we should plant our feet at this time, but certainly would you respect anyone else's thoughts on the matter?
No, I tend to agree with that. If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for the Forest Flyer project, subject to the following findings and attach recommended conditions of approval. A, the mitigated negative declaration and proposed mitigation measures that, and all content and adopt it for the project based upon the following five findings in our packet, and B, the conditional use permit and all the attachments thereto.
Mr. Chair, as a point of clarification, these, I believe you're referring to the augmented findings that are included in the errata that was presented this morning, starting on page 15?
Yes.
I think that's my phone, and I'm sorry.
I was going to say, it sounds like mine, but it wasn't mine.
Is everyone satisfied then? Is there a second to the
I have a second, Deb.
We have a second to the motion. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to say two things if I could. I appreciate the applicant making an effort to really put this in an area that has the least impact. I think that was a good gesture on your part, and I still have some concerns, but I don't think they raised to the level of not supporting going forward.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed. Still wondering. Anyone choosing to appeal has 10 calendar days here at the planning department to file an appeal, and I believe the cost is $529. And you have, I said 10 calendar days. We thank you all for your comments and your involvement. I understand some of the anxieties that some of you are sharing, but I, it's a strange world we live in, sometimes we can only go so far with trying to do things that seem logical. So thank you for your comments, and let's hope this works out the best possible way. If there's nothing else, no other comments by anyone, we're adjourned.